Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to a special called board meeting of Tuesday, March 17th, 2020 at 9:00 a.m. At this time, I've asked Commissioner Fleming to say a prayer for this community, and then we'll have the pledge. Everyone, please stand.
Good morning. Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we come this morning in your name. We thank you for light, health, and strength. We thank you for how you brought us blessings and kept us. We thank you how you watched over us all last night while we slumbered and slept and started us out on another day's journey. Father, we pray that you bless us in the midst of times like these. Pray that you bless us in this time, oh God, and this coronavirus. Give us strength. Watch over and protect us. I know that we are covered by the blood. But Father, we pray that you give us strength. Give us a mind. Give us a peace of mind to understand that let your will be done. We can't make it without you. We can't do nothing until your Spirit comes. Now bless us this day in this meeting. Help us to come together to do your will. For we lean and we depend on you. Look on these commissioners. Look on this staff, county staff. Look on our community. Bless us as a whole. Father, we ask these blessings in Jesus' name. We pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business this morning is approval of minutes from our March 3rd, 2020 regular board meeting. Do I have any comments or do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Gamble.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving along to our consent agenda, items 2, 3, 14. Do I have any items wishing to be pulled for discussion, or do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Before we go to... On the item number... Where is it? Six. Do we... Are we supposed to handle that in two different motions in declaring a sole source? Okay. Nevermind.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Super.
Motion by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner Fleming. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving ahead to general business. Adoption of a resolution declared in a local state of emergency due to the COVID-19 virus. I have any questions or comments? I have any questions or comments? A motion to approve this resolution as it's written, or do I need to read it?
You don't need to read it.
Thank you.
But you need to put in a date. I mean, if they're...
This has to be renewed in seven days.
Seven days.
Okay.
Just to make sure that you understand.
Okay. Yeah. This is just like our other... We'll put in today's date. It's just like an emergency. We'd call for a hurricane or a storm, correct?
Right.
So I'll make a motion to accept the resolution to expire seven days from today or to be renewed. Is that the right word?
It'll just... It's an automatic... It automatically... They only last seven days. What will happen is we will notify you of a day that we need at least three of you to show up to renew it. We'll have to have a special call meeting.
It would be on this date, which would be the 15th, 6th, 17th.
17th is today's date.
Do I have a motion by Commissioner Hale? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamble. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Harris. I have a couple of things that I would like to discuss briefly. One, in your last meeting, the board authorized us to go ahead and execute the purchase of a piece of property. I'd like to make sure for the record so that Mr. Musgrove can ensure that Finance is aware of this, that that includes the release of the funds for payment for the closing on that property. That's really important because that will occur, and we don't need to come back to have a special meeting just to accomplish that.
Do we need to have that in the motion? Was it not included in the...
Well, just go ahead and make a motion right now. It should have been included, but I'm trying to remove any question by anyone that it was included at that time.
Remove that we authorize release of funds.
I got a motion by Commissioner Richardson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Item number two, Mr. Harris.
I've got another... Are you reading from numbers, or are you just... You're assuming I've got another number? I just want to make sure that we're on the same page.
I've got some inside information.
Good. I've got another number here. We had a...
You didn't know I have my crystal ball right here.
You're right about that. Mandy, what did we do with the smarsh renewal?
I love it. Got me looking.
Okay, so we don't... I don't have a copy of this for you, but we have had the state-required archive system in place for text messaging, phone service for over a year, and we've been paying monthly. Well, the renewal just came. They've changed it to annual payment instead of monthly payment. I was going to bring that in here for y'all to... We just got it yesterday, so it wasn't a part of the packet. But I need you to go ahead and authorize us to continue that service and make the annual payment and just renew it.
Under review of the contract by council.
Yeah. Contract really didn't change. It's just the... What they did change was the method of payment from monthly to annual, which is actually better for us anyway. So I just need approval of that. Smarsch. S-M-A-R-S-H.
So you need a motion for that?
Please.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion that we authorized go ahead, Mr. Harris, to pay it with approval of council looking over it, making sure everything's all right.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fleming.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamble.
Gamble.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, number three on that list...
Steady going.
Is something that some of you may know. We've got three weeks that would have otherwise been scheduled between now and your next board meeting. There was an extra week in this month. I would submit to you that if the board agrees, that we should not plan that meeting until a little bit later when we know more about what's going on, which also means that if we have to have, which we will have, to renew the state of emergency, we'll have that meeting. You'll be notified of that. The public will be notified of it. The press will be notified of it. But then, as far as your next regularly scheduled meeting, we will keep you informed on that as well because when that time comes or when it gets near that, we may decide that it's better to just hold off for another week or two. But in the interim, Mr. Bravat and I had a conversation... I had a conversation with Mr. Baker yesterday. I don't guess he's here. But we will continue to pay all invoices. There has been a practice in Swanee County, which is not a requirement of anything except that I think the board imposed it on itself many years ago, and that was a requirement that all invoices be stacked up over at Finance, and then the board take action and vote to approve payment of those invoices before the checks were actually released. Some of you may be familiar with that. That practice isn't a requirement. I spoke to Mr. Baker yesterday and told him that because we may stretch the timeframe between board meetings, that I have to have the ability to go ahead and make payments on invoices. This would be for budgeted items only. It would not be for anything that isn't already budgeted. I just want to let the board know that because in some cases, some of you have been contacted about from a contractor or a vendor asking if they can get their check. But that's the way that we're going to manage this going forward. Mr. Baker agreed that it isn't a requirement and that they're going to go ahead and release those funds when those checks are written on whatever schedule they write them on. But it won't be held up then, release of the payment, waiting for the board to vote to release it. Since I've been here, there's never been any payment withheld from a vendor, supplier, contractor when they were owed. So I would just like for all of you to know that in case you get questioned about it, and you may be questioned about it if someone realizes that we're not scheduling another meeting three weeks out or two weeks out like we normally would.
Mr. Chairman, question?
Yes, sir.
This just involves, like under the consent agenda, the first item, the approval of processed invoices, not budgeted items that require additional consent or action taken.
This would be for all of the business that we are conducting.
We've already approved.
Everything that we're conducting that is budgeted, that doesn't otherwise require some type of board action.
That's okay. Just want to clarify that.
We have agreements out there, and quite frankly, when seven days from now, when it's time for us to renew the state of emergency, if I have other issues... The only thing that I can think of right now that may come up, two things that would concern me. One would be entering into a contract or having to approve a change order on a project.
That's...
You know, most of our change orders are covered by grant funds anyway. We list those grants in the budget at the beginning of the year, and then we begin operating with those later because they're all reimbursement grants. But we wouldn't enter into any new agreement that has a financial obligation at all without bringing it to the board.
The only problem that I have is the change orders. Sometimes we get... I get hammered from people on change orders. That's the only thing that scares me because I know we have a meeting bound every two weeks anyway. In this case, we're just going to be putting it off. But are any of the change orders... Do you suspect any of the change orders that could come up on any projects within now, between now and, let's say, April 21st, which would be our second board meeting of next month, scheduled board meeting, be something that could not wait until then?
We wouldn't...
Do we have any projects that are going on?
We wouldn't approve a change order.
I know that.
We're not going to approve a change order. Those would come back to the board regardless.
That's why I was clarifying.
So if I have to bring those up because of timing, if I have to bring them in at a time when we're planning to have a special called meeting to renew the state of emergency, we would just go ahead and post any additional items that we're going to consider at the same time.
Okay. So this is not authorizing any change orders to be just approved in-house?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have anything major underway right now that would be called? The only thing that we've got right now, in fact, I think a couple of them are in here, were some change orders obtained at the airport, but those were reductions in cost. But I... We don't have any roads? I don't have any other projects right now that are underway. Uh-uh. I think we'll be fine.
I think we... Do we need to have two different motions to suspend that policy for the time being?
We couldn't determine that it was even a policy. There's nothing... It's just a practice.
Just a practice.
And I don't know when it... My theory is that it began many, many years ago when the county used to struggle to make payroll, and I'm talking about 25 years ago. And they probably at that time put it in place and just left it in place. It's not a bad check and balance to have, but in this current situation, I think it's all right if we don't follow it.
I agree. I agree. And I think we should just postpone our next board meeting until it's 21st of April. That's our second board meeting, and then that way, if you have any special call that you have to take into account, then we can do that.
Right.
I'm willing to put that in the form of a motion.
I'm okay with that because we need to do a... We will have special called meetings, and if we have regular agenda items that we need to cover at that time, we can do it.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Richardson changing our... Or not having our next board meeting and scheduling our next... Or following up with our April 21st board meeting. Do I have a second on that? Motion?
I have a second.
I have a second. Motion by Commissioner Richardson. Got a second by Commissioner Fleming. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number four.
Number four.
We need to go ahead and... I mean, moving the meeting is what that thing was about and agreeing to all of that. Can we have a motion, though, to suspend the practice or procedure that we've been...
Wasn't clear.
It wasn't clear to me, and I was trying to...
I'm calling it a practice.
Yeah, I'm calling it a practice.
Because we've never been able to... There isn't any statutory requirement for that. I had never seen that before I came here, and I was in a position like yours for a long time. Never seen it before. So in my mind, it isn't even... It isn't a requirement. It's never been a requirement. It's something that was self-imposed. The reality is the check and balance actually occurs between my office and the clerk's office. We process invoices for payment. We put a purchase order with them. The purchase orders are typically already assigned before that obligation ever occurs and the invoice arrives. So I have to sign off on them in cases of projects. We've got engineers, others that verify that everything's been completed, and then they're sent over to the finance department. Finance evaluates them to make sure that they are compliant with the budget lines that we've utilized to make payment. So that's where your real check and balance is. It isn't in this practice. This practice is nothing more than a... An exercise to stall the process on payment. That's why some of you get calls from time to time from people wanting their money because we've been sitting on their money. They've completed the work. In some cases, 30 days or more previous. Takes a couple of weeks to get everything written up over there at Finance, and then the checks just sit in a stack, waiting for the board to vote. That's why I say it's a practice that isn't necessary. It isn't required, and it just stalls the process of people being paid after they perform work for us.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize. I thought that I made... I thought that I included that in my motion, but I'd be willing to move that we suspend that as well.
In a second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Richardson and a second by Commissioner Fleming. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
That's okay.
Mr. Chairman, the only other thing I would like to comment on briefly, and I saw the mayor came in a minute ago, and we've already blamed all this on the city, so we might want to inform him of... No, the truth is, I think most of us by now have already heard what's going on in a lot of these other states, and I don't know if our governor is going to issue such an order here or not, but this pertains to restaurants, gymnasiums, bars, not continuing to offer their services, with the exception of drive-through at restaurants. If that occurs soon, then we will be calling another special meeting to consider that for the county, and I don't have any idea what the city might do when that... When and if that occurs. But it wouldn't surprise me if that happens sooner than later.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Hardes is already doing it, I think.
Just doing the drive-through?
Yeah. Just drive-through. I went there this morning, and no one was inside. I went to Burger King. You can go inside Burger King, but not Hardes.
Yeah.
They got everything locked down.
Mr. Chairman, you know, just looking at other things like Jacksonville and Gainesville, they've already started limiting patrons inside the restaurant to 50 patrons at a time. You know, so...
That was probably based on the old number of 50.
Well, but they also were having, you know...
10, yeah.
The larger spacing, so...
Yeah.
I'm expecting, like Mr. Harris, you know, that there'll be an additional...
I think it's going to come.
I think it's a 10.
The group, yeah.
10.
The group is 10.
I think we're in a good position to act on whatever's necessary. That's a... I would like to say this morning, I appreciate the board, the meeting getting changed and everybody making time in their day to get here. I just felt like it was important and kind of gives us an extra day getting this done instead of it being tonight and kind of starting tomorrow. I wanted to take care of this and give the sheriff his... What he needs moving forward, and I just want to appreciate you for taking your time to make this happen. Also, I'd like to ask the sheriff if he'd come up and say a couple of words, maybe give us a little update on your side. I know you talked a little bit about the... Abbott Christian Village has reached out to you. I don't know if all the boards heard about that or if that's still happening or...
Yeah. Got a call from Jim Skanks. It's... Haven't finalized yet, but they're leaning towards this, is that basically blocking off the two accesses that go into the actual village. And my understanding, they would have some of their personnel just checking to see who comes and goes there and make sure that, you know, whoever comes or, you know, is a worker or someone that has a business there. And then they're actually... They want security there, you know, some officers there to, you know, in the case they have some issues or problems, someone that wants to go there, that they're not allowed to go. So that's something that's in the works there for the park. Now, and that's... Hence, I was... I talked to Sharon, and hopefully that, you know, this being a nursing home and so forth, that this will be something there that we can get reimbursed from if we have to pay our officers overtime, you know, for this. Actually, the park, I mean, the Dallin Park would pay for the, you know, their workers to go out there and check and see who comes and goes. So we're still in the process of that, and which I'll let them know this local order has been signed, so this will probably help him make a decision and plus us if we have an overtime. So that's, you know, coming down the pike. And then, you know, which Sharon Rainey can tell you, the different things that I appreciate him having this... I'm not sure just what it's called, but they come through our offices and all and doing the spraying or the misting where that, you know, kills the virus. And then Sharon, she's in the process of ordering, you know, trying to get her some antiseptics, some of them suits, the PPC R suits. And then, you know, at the jail, we're taking extreme, extreme measurements over there, you know. We're suspending all contact visitations with anything, anybody, other than just that glass partition. We're letting the visitors come in, but they got a glass between us and the inmates. You know, getting all them the... You know, doing the same thing over there, what they can as far as doing the misting and spraying inside there, all the antibacterial stuff. We're wiping everything down, you know, quite a few during the day. Just making sure all the correction officers over there, you know, have the necessary stuff. And then with the patrol cars, we're able to get, I think, one of the handheld misters that we're going to do the patrol cars with, and then antiseptic wipes and so forth. So we at Sheriff's Office, you know, especially the jail, because we sure don't want anything in the jail, so I'm not sure... That would be just a mess to try to deal with, so we're trying to keep it out of there. Got different protocols if when an inmate is or when someone is arrested, you know, the nurses got some protocol if, you know, if they got a cough or any type of systems, and they're quarantined right away until they get tested. But other than that, that's... I mean, we're just, you know, just taking our precautions, you know, with the jail, with the deputies, with people we deal with out there, out there in the public, and just doing the best we can.
I appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
And your office. I mean, thanks.
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Sessions wanted to speak.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's what he wanted to do. Larry Sessions, 4377, 72nd Street, Live Oak. Running Swanee Valley Transit Authority, as of tomorrow, we are only going to do medical and work trips. The work trips are one of these that we're going to make a decision exactly where we're going to come with these type of people. But medical and pharmacy trips will continue, which will bring us down to about 30% of our normal level. So we've talked to some drivers. Some of them want us... We've already got one that wanted to self-quarantine down in Hatch Bend, so he's already off. I've got another couple that I'm going to allow them to take their PTO time and/or annual leave if need be to continue their paycheck. We will be getting a lot less money in, but with us cutting back, I think I can manage it. But, you know, throughout these three counties, you may hear some things, and I sent a text to Commissioner Hale and Commissioner Richardson this morning about what we're doing. But in case you get any questions, you know, we're just doing only medical and only work for this point in time until further notice. And basically, we're going to base it on when the kids go back to school, and we'll continue the rest of what we do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
I've got a question real quick before you take off, because I forgot to ask this this morning when I talked to you. As far as the shopping, I know the shopping trips that we... That we've had in the past, is there... Have you looked at any plans to just simply provide, through payment, of course, delivery for people who have already paid for them online, just got to pick it up?
I've discussed that this morning, and I'll give you another scenario, too. The TD Commission pays us to take a certain group of people in Hamilton County to a meal site, which they enjoy. I tried to get hold of the governor's office yesterday, and they wouldn't answer me, but the TD Commission will not pay me to get their meals and take them to them. They say I have to have a person on board. What I was going to try to get the governor to do yesterday was to change that through this period to where we could get the meals from the meal sites and take them to the clients, which would only be half the miles they'd have to be paying for because we're not picking them up, taking them up, and taking them back. It's only, you know, one way. But I haven't got an answer from... I haven't even got a call back from the governor, and I'm sure they're busy. But I've been looking into all those things, but the coordination of pickup and delivery there, it'd be a nightmare.
Yeah.
It really would. We're here for so-and-so, and then, of course, I'm putting my people in danger, meeting more people in a more crowded place, you know. So it's a two-way street. I've got to protect my people, too, and so that's what we're going to do. So as far as the delivery services, I'm sure somebody can make some serious money here in the next few months, starting their own delivery service.
Yeah, I know most of your clients of our clients over there are maybe not the kind that will order online and pay online for their stuff. So I just wondered, since people are being restricted on their ability to go shopping and stores are starting to basically do deliveries and/or to do pickups...
Well, with the way I'm funded, I'm not allowed to do those kinds of things, you know, without changing policies and the whole nine yards. So, you know, that's why I was trying to get hold of the governor yesterday to at least change the rule on... To the TD Commission to allow me to deliver the meals versus pick them up and take them to a site. But I don't want to get a call back.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I have a couple of questions that... Mr. Harris, I know it's going to get worse before it gets better, but how are we prepared to, when it comes to the county workers, whether they're staying home? If it were to come to that? Employees?
Well, the majority have sick leave and annual leave on the books, and they can use that. If the board at some point wants to make a decision to... Because we also have a policy on leave without pay. If the board decided if we get to a point where we need to consider it, the board can make a decision on, you know, paying people that have run out of annual leave. In the past, on very rarely, but on a couple of occasions, I've come to the board and asked them to allow employees to continue to be on the books without pay beyond the time that they would otherwise be allowed to stay on the books without pay, and that was simply so that their insurances and things stayed in place.
Right, okay.
So we just have to have that conversation when the time comes, if it does.
You're not, are you suggesting paying them, or just letting them stay on without pay? I didn't hear you.
No, I'm saying that the majority of our employees have time on the books today. They can use, they can use their vacation leave, they can use their sick leave.
I know, then you said something when they run out.
When they run out, we have a provision today for them to stay on, they continue to be employees, and they're on leave without pay.
Okay, that's the part I missed, you saying without pay.
Without pay.
Okay, now, I always got a couple of calls, one from the Spiritus Swanee and the Fair Association, and I think I heard Commissioner Gamble earlier, I mentioned that he, he got a phone call. I don't know what their decision was, the Fair Board was supposed to meet.
I had a conversation just an hour ago about that, if you want to know what the decision was.
Yes, no, should be.
What, what their decision is, they're going to take those animals to Fanning Springs, and then they're going to try to wholesale those to a wholesaler that will then send them a check, and then they're going to divide it up amongst the kids.
So, the fair is closed, it won't be no?
No fair.
Okay.
That, that, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, that's the decision they made last night at their meeting?
Yeah, that's what I heard.
Well, they, they argued about it some last night, it was still going on this morning, I had a couple of phone calls this morning, but the final decision was that they're going to take them over there and they're going to just wholesale the things.
Okay, okay, and James Cornet, I talked with him, he said that they were canceling all the events at the Spiritus Swanee, wanted the board to know that.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Richardson, I know you've got something on your mind, so go ahead with it.
Right now, it's just a big, empty gap, I forgot what I was about to say, so.
I can't believe that.
I'm looking forward to see it, and then it's gone, so they get to.
I would like, I'd like to just ask a question, because I'm going to tell you what's going on, you know, I get, I'm the one that gets the phone calls initially, and I know a lot of you have about this fair particularly, but when it comes to utilizing county-owned facilities for the purposes of large gatherings, our message is that the Board of County Commissioners is following the guidance of the CDC and the governor's office, who has recommended that all large events be canceled. Now, if the board wants to take a different position on that, I need to know that, but that's where it stands right now. I've shared with people that we don't have any experts that know more than the people that are working on this in all these labs, these scientists and doctors.
I got, Mr. Chairman, I got a question for our attorney. With everybody, CDC, state, federal government recommending that gatherings, no larger in certain amounts happen, if we did allow them, would we be opening up ourselves to possible liability?
Somebody would have to prove negligence on y'all's part.
That was really my only concern about that, I mean, not my only, but one of my concerns.
A big one.
A big one.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, a couple of questions, one, well, actually, once the question and one statement, I listened yesterday to the, I guess, head of CDC, who said that overreaction is probably our best, our best option now, because if we overreact now, then we're not behind the eight ball later. I don't, I, I think we just need to be taking precautions and, and make sure that, that people understand that there is a responsibility that we have to our families and our communities. We may not ever be affected by, by COVID-19, we may have very limited exposure to COVID-19, if any, but in reality, you know, we've got a lot of older folks that go back and forth over to the, over to the hospitals in Gainesville, and they have it, so, over in that area, so there's always the potential bringing it back, and I just think that if we, if we take the necessary precautions, we'll be, we're smarter than, or, let me back up, we're wiser than a lot of others who would not.
So, that's the guy that just had a big empty void?
Yeah, well, the big empty void, yeah, absolutely. The, the question that I had, which is, was, which was the empty void at the time, is we've talked, we've heard about the release of, or the development and release of the test kits, and getting out to certain retail establishments to provide testing, drive-through testing and those types of things. My question is, is, does anyone, do you know, Sharon, where we are as a county?
We're going to let her speak in just a moment, so if you, if that's, you have some questions for her, then no.
Yeah, and that's, that's my question for you.
I'd like to welcome you this morning, appreciate the job you do for us, behind the scenes.
Thank you, thank you very much. At the EOC, we are on the 1115 conference calls every day, and after the conference calls, I'm sending the information out to the stakeholders within the community. Right now, we have our cert team members, those that are able, are actually in the EOC right now, they're calling doctor's offices, calling some of the stores, making sure they're able to restock their shelves. These are some of the questions that have been asked by the state, or is Walmart, Publix, are they able to restock their shelves efficiently to supply the demand for the community? We're meeting with Department of Health, with the hospital, pretty much daily, to find out, as of right now, there, there is not a drive-through testing. That is in the process, Mr. Harris and Department of Health and myself, we've all talked about it, looking at locations, should that become a need? So, we'll have a place located and have it all planned and mapped out, but there's a lot of behind-the-scenes work going on each and every day, throughout the day, meeting with everybody. But one of the things we want to make sure is that if people are going to the doctor's offices, that they have the, everything they need, do they have the PPE equipment that they need? If not, can we request it from the state? So, if there's, you know, talk to Mr. Sessions, if your people are, you know, bus drivers, do they need the N95 masks? We're reaching out to the school, if school's going to be out for another eight weeks, we just don't know. Are they going to be out delivering lunches? Do they need N95 masks? So, we're reaching out to all these different departments, find out what their needs are, not that we can get it, but we're trying, we're reaching out to the state, letting them know what resources we need here as in our county.
Having asked that question, now, let me kind of pivot over to a concern, last night, we were advised at our, as ministers in our church, as pastors in our church, that one of the ladies that works over in Gainesville, works for a specific preschool over there, who is not shutting down, but yet has a lot of parents that are in medical staff at the hospitals, and one of those medical staff members is treating a, one of the COVID-19 patients in Gainesville, and my, my concern, okay, I thought there were two, my understanding there were two, but maybe we sent one of them back to Georgia.
As of yesterday, there's, there's one, but.
So, my concern would be, in, because we have so many people going back and forth over to Gainesville, we have such interaction between Latchwell County and ours, if we are in contact with Latchwell County and what they are doing to, to, to maybe combat this proactively, my, you know, my understanding is, is two of the worst places, fastest-spreading places that the, that this virus can be found in are in nursing homes and preschools. So, you know, that, that's a huge question for me, because I don't want someone coming, especially a worker, coming over and bringing it, number one, but more importantly, that starts spreading over there, we start sending people over there, what are we doing practically?
I can tell you that what we're being told is there's a lot of unknown.
Sure.
This virus can lay dormant for three or four days, so there's a lot of unknown right now, a lot of speculation, so that's what is scaring everybody. We're, like I said, we're on the conference calls, the things that we do know, we're sending out. I don't want to stand up here and talk about, you know, tell you something I'm not positive about.
I'm just wondering if you're working with the Latchwell Counties and the Grand Counties?
Oh, yeah, we're, yes.
And trying to.
Yes, I can tell you that Hal, with emergency management there, he's on top of it.
Okay.
Yes.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
What about the availability of any items you're trying to order, like the suits you was talking about? I mean, is it something that's available, or you can't find it?
I can tell you that we can't find it, but the state is putting in requests for hundreds of thousands, if not a million, of the Tyvek suits and the N95 masks, so they're more likely to get it before we can, so that's why I'm asking every department, get us what you need, so we can push our requests up to the state. We have a resource request form that we have to fill out, and we have to show that we have attempted to order it. Now, as of right now, we may have to pay for it, being a fiscally constrained county, it may be a 50/50, we may have to pay for it, we're not sure, but either way, we're pushing those requests up, to see what we can get and, and hope for the best.
Thank you.
And we're also open seven days a week, limited hours on weekends, because we want to be there for the conference calls in case any department wants to come in.
Any other questions for Ms. Sharon?
I had asked, Min Sheriff talked about it last night, I know y'all are just getting reports from the state of Florida, but I've been hearing a rumor that there was active case about Austin, did you ever find out if there was?
There is.
There is one up there.
Yeah.
Okay, I was just curious.
I actually think there's two up at the base.
Yeah, and there's discussion, you mentioned daycares, there's discussion of potentially closing daycares down as well.
I know that puts a lot of burden.
There's a lot of discussion right now.
I realize that puts a lot of burden on the workers, especially the medical workers that, that need to be in the hospitals and such, but I also realize that we got schools closed, too, it's the same thing, and.
The Forest Sheriff's Association, you know, there's a, I can't remember just what retail stores they are, but, you know, we're, they, we make contact with them, and they put us on the priority list, you know, as far as getting these antiseptics and wipes and so forth, so we're doing that to, you know, we'll, I'll be upon the, on a higher level to, once they get the supplies in, that they'll be able to distribute it out to us, and then at 3:00 today, we have a conference call with all the Forest Sheriff's Association to update us on, on anything that, you know, that we need to be doing or not doing.
And we have shelter kits, that we have hand sanitizer that we had ordered a while back, thankfully, so we allowed Supervisor of Elections Office to come over and take from our two-liter bottles to fill some small bottles, to where at least she has some hand sanitizer, so.
Mr. Chairman, I have, I know there's a, you said there's a lot of unknowns out there, you hear it is and you hear that, and, but I think, I think they said a case that's in the Latchwell County that came out of Georgia, am I correct? Came out of Atlanta?
I believe so, and I know there's one in Leon County and Gadsden County, I don't believe they're, they're, they live in Leon County and Gadsden, but I believe they're somewhere else right now, so they're not actually in the county, but they're.
Well, I think, I think we have to, have to be educated, I don't think there's a shield that will protect you from any place unless you're quarantined or in a closed-off environment, and, but it's kind, it is, it is, it is scary, tricky, because it's unknown.
Yeah, what we're telling people and what we're putting on our Facebook page is the social distancing, if you don't have to go into, to a, whatever, whatever meetings, like you did here, you know, stay away, if you don't have to go, don't go, wash your hands, hand sanitizer, just use common sense.
I haven't been to work yet, but I'm scheduled to go in tonight, which I took daytime off anyway, but I don't know what the state side, what they're doing, whether, what the kind of protection of the gloves, the mask, and I'm quite sure y'all got masks.
We do. But I'm here for you guys, if you have any questions, don't hesitate to call.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Harris.
If we could, just for a second, go back to the issue of employees, we shut the libraries down.
I was going to bring that up, ask you some questions about it.
And I had someone send me an email that I haven't responded to yet, I don't believe that they're employed by the library, I think it's just someone offering their opinion.
Probably the same one I just got.
About just letting those people stay home, yeah, so that's a question.
They got a daughter that works there.
I got the same one this morning or last night.
Right now, even though the library's shut, those employees are coming in, and we've got other employees that are working. If the board wants to make a decision on how to treat this, you just tell me how you want to treat it. Clearly, the library has adequate space for ample separation of employees, if that's all that's in there, because there's a lot of square footage in those libraries, but if you want to send library employees home.
I don't say we send them home, I say, I find, we'll give them, give them the option, if they want to burn their time, let them burn it.
Give them that choice, absolutely.
I agree with that.
Okay.
Well, well, while we're on that subject, when I asked about the employees, why don't we make a decision when that time come, that you can go ahead, it's authorized that you go ahead and, instead of having a call meeting on the employees also?
Well, my approach would be that if they don't want to come in, that they use their annual leave or, or sick leave, and I'll just give you another example, in cases of where we have requests come in for family medical leave, I require them to first use up all of their annual leave and sick leave, so in this particular case, I would approach it similarly. If we have closed an office and the employee doesn't want to show up, then if they want to go home, they can do that, if they want to use their annual leave or sick leave.
I'm not insinuating that anybody has thought of this or is doing this, but what we're dealing with here is a serious situation, but everybody in this community has a responsibility, and that's not to take advantage of the system.
That's right.
We're here to look after the people and help them, and you have to be responsible as a citizen to take care of yourself and your family, and if you have a job to do, you need to go do it, and if you feel, like you gentlemen have said, you, you don't want to be there, or you're in fear of being there, then you're more than welcome to use your leave.
Use your leave, I agree.
So, I don't mean no disrespect for that, but I want to be very clear that, you know, we're a.
And, and at that point, I mean, it's still being early in the phase, if, if something happens and this goes prolonged and they run out of time, or they started burning it way early, and we can extend it so we don't have to lose employees, but I don't know that we get into the business of paying the ones without time that choose to stay home.
That's one of the reasons for my comment, is I want people to be very responsible and respectful for their situation.
Right.
And each one is responsible for their own self and their family and their well-being, and they don't use this as an avenue to take advantage of something, is my, my point.
No, I agree with you.
Oh, I agree.
Anything else, Mr. Harris?
No, sir.
I have a question for them, EMS, are they adequately supplied for all of their calls and, and such, to make sure that, I know they have normal, they have their normal supplies, but are we reaching out to make sure that they're taking additional precautions?
They are, now, they haven't come back to me with any deficiencies that I'm aware of, they got a lot of respirators that we had gotten from surplus, which was a blessing to us, but I haven't heard that they're deficient in anything that they think that they need right now.
I think, right now, with 911 screening all the calls, ask them what they got, different symptoms, and if they suspect a case, they, we've got, what, was it, two ambulances that are utilizing for that?
Yeah, they're trying to limit transports in those types of cases, someone's suspicious about.
Yeah, they're not, they're not just using all.
Yeah, they're not spreading that across all the equipment.
No, we got two dedicated to it.
And their general practice, whether there's a call or not, I mean, they always disinfect and clean and spray, and we have plenty of that as well.
I haven't heard that we don't have the things that they typically use, and I talked to the chief last week about it.
Anything else, Mr. Harris?
No, sir.
Mr. Pavat, anything?
No, sir, not at this time, thank you.
Mandy, do you have an update for us with anything? Commissioner Richardson, closing thoughts and comments?
I think we've, we've pretty well said it, just, you know, if the public were here, I'd be telling them that if they're listening on YouTube, watching on YouTube, then tell them just to, just to be smart, I mean, I've got a, I got a call yesterday that wanted to make this a huge political issue, and it's like, you know, the messaging may be political, but the reality of it is, is we're dealing with something that doesn't have a cure at this point, and we, we don't even have treatment protocols at this point, so just be smart, think about other people, not just yourself.
Thank you. Commissioner Fleming?
I don't have, just to comment, I'm thinking about Ms. Hinkson, she said there's a lot of unknown, we never understand the mysteries behind it, we just, we got to trust and believe in God, I, I was teasing, but I was for real, we're covered by the blood, but there's a lot of unknowns out there about this, this virus. I did get a, I got a, on my phone, I have a book that was sent out, that this thing was predicted to be in, in the year of 2020, and that it would, and I got, it's a book, I got it on the book.
I saw it.
You saw it? And it'd be gone for 10 years and it'd come back, but anyway, we just have to be careful, got to trust in, trust in God in these times.
Absolutely. Commissioner Gamble?
Um, the only thing I got is just, you know, thank everybody for coming out this morning and getting this over with, I ask everybody to just, let's use common sense, I believe this is serious, but I also believe a lot of it's kind of overreaction on the media's part and different things, but we're taking all these actions with the purpose of nothing happening, so hopefully, that's what it is, we, we exercise all these cautions for nothing to happen, and that's what we want, so, you know, I, I, there'll be people out there, you canceled this, you didn't do this, and nothing happened, well, I just want them to realize that's the point.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, that's all.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Hale?
I just echo what you guys have already stated, I'm, you know, this is one of the things, as a, being a commissioner, you don't think would come across your desk, you know, when you get elected to this position, but I'm glad that I sit on this board with this group of guys, I thank you, Sheriff, and, and your team, and everything you guys are doing, the precautions you guys are taking, and, and I just think that if we stay alert and follow the instructions and do the best we can, I think we'll be okay, but I did, like you said, I do want the public to know that we are doing all we can do with what we have dealt to us at this time, so, and one last thing, it has nothing to do with all this, but I did tell you at the last meeting, that Madison County was having a special call meeting on a Friday night to discuss the contamination of the rivers, just FYI, they voted in their meeting to advertise, I think, up until July. to, um, advertise, I think, up until July, mid-July, they're gonna advertise for some type of environmentalist law firm to come in and do some research and get that information back to them. Still don't have a number to give you guys, but once I have that, they'll, or they have it, they'll share it with me and I'll bring it to you guys. We can discuss it more, but they are moving forward with that, so, yeah, thank you.
That's all.
That's all.
I'd just, uh, like to say, I appreciate this board and, and what we're doing and being proactive and moving forward. It's, uh, it's tough to fight something that you can't see. That's the scary part of this. It, uh, you know, we don't, I mean, we're sitting here, we don't even know if it's in this room, or, we, we don't know any of these things. We're just, we're trying to do the best we can in tough times. I understand that each of you is getting calls, and a lot of them's not good, and whether it's closing events or not allowing this or that, but there's a reason that each of you are, are sitting up here in this position, and that's because the people trust you to make the right decisions, not for one person, for everybody. And I want to commend each of you for doing that. We'll move forward, and, and we're gonna get through this as a community, uh, as friends and family. We come together, whatever it takes, we, we'll do what it takes to make it happen.
Yeah, absolutely. You make a point. I mean, the, the right decision is often not the popular decision, and I think that's where we're gonna find ourselves next couple of weeks with the decision we have to make with this.
Exactly.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask, just, I, I really want to make sure that I've got a good consensus with the Board on this. I brought this up before on this business with facilities and buildings that the county owns. My message right now is that this board is standing behind the recommendations of the Governor and the CDC. I know that each of you got phone calls and pressure about that fair. I know that children are disappointed, but I'm just gonna tell you that, um, like I told someone this morning, children need to experience the reality of life lessons. This is an opportunity, and it's an unfortunate one, but it's an opportunity for, to teach children a life lesson. Life isn't easy. Sometimes it can be tough, and you gotta make tough decisions, but we're in, uh, a u- unique time in our lives and in the lives of our children as well, and they just have to understand that this is important right now. And, uh, there will be other fairs, hopefully, but the, the issue for us was that of the facility. All those phone calls I got over the weekend and last night and this morning were about the use of that facility over there. If the Board has a different view on that, I need to know that. But right now, that's gonna be the message that comes from my office, because it was all day yesterday as well, and, uh.
And night.
Yeah, that's right. So you tell me if you want me to give a different message, but if all of you are on board with me, simply stay even going forward, and it, things could change going forward. It could be tougher. But the message right now is that we're gonna follow the guidance of the CDC and the Governor and the President, um, because I'm not aware of us having any expertise in this.
Like I said, it's, uh, it's not the popular decision, but I think it's the right decision.
I, yeah, I, I mean, I'm not a medical expert. There's people that works for the government and the state that are, and I gotta rely on them at this point in time, and that, and my only option here is to keep the people of Swanee County safe is for me to do my job and not allow it. And if I'm the bad guy for that, I just have to be him, and it's not popular. I'm gonna get people calling me and be upset with me. But if I keep one person from getting that, if I keep one grandparent from going to watch their kid show that animal that wouldn't not have been there if it wasn't for that child showing that animal, or one great-grandparent that the elderly are susceptible to this, if I keep one person, I've done what I supposed to do, and I'll take the heat for it.
Mr. Chairman, sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I'm just not sure, you know, overall participation, some of the discussions I had as far as some of the buyers and, and people of that nature would even show up, is what I was told. So, I mean, there's, like you say, it's not very popular, it's not something that makes a certain group of our community happy, but I do agree with you. I mean, our, our goal is to keep everyone safe, uh, at all times if possible, so.
Just a update, y'all, yesterday, the rec board met, and we postponed, uh, the baseball and softball season.
Mm-hmm, that's the email.
Moved it ahead, what, two weeks. Uh, we didn't shut down the parks, they're still open to the public, but there's no sports or any gathering sanctioned by the rec department. All of that has been canceled.
The good thing about the, uh, springs are, is the river's so high that, that it's not, a lot of them aren't even wanting to go out to the springs because the water's brown. Um, but, uh, as far the, for the record, I'll just say this, that, um, I don't know the, from the agricultural side of it, with the kids and the shows and stuff like that, how many people have to be there at one time anyway. I talked to Mr. Harris before the meeting. Uh, it, it would be difficult. I'm sure we could restrict, uh, uh, the crowds from being in those, uh, meetings, but, or in those, uh, the showings, but in reality, the question is, is this, if I don't know enough about this process, why would I stand, um, opposed to what the county needs to do responsibly? And so, um, I know, uh, Commissioner Gamble, you, you typically are involved in showing, uh, or sponsoring a show, or, uh, your, one of your kids are showing, uh, an animal, so, um, you probably know a lot more than I do about it. And so, I'm, I'm kind of leaving it up to the Board to, to give me direction on it. I know that I got a call today from somebody who was very concerned about it, uh, having to travel all the way back over to Ha, uh, Fanning Springs on such short notice to, to be able to, uh, handle this in Fanning Springs. But I also understand the side of precaution, so that's, uh, um, I just want to make sure that I address that in, uh, for the record. Uh, I don't have a problem with what the Board decides to do, since I don't know what Louis goes on with it.
I need, I need to clarify this. I mean, I, I feel like we got a lot of discussion going on here, and I want to be very clear and unified as a Board if we're for this or against it. So I don't know how we want to handle it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask you to just vote.
I was gonna say.
Decide if you're gonna follow the guidance of the Governor and the CDC or not, because that's, that'll make it easier for me.
Just in the form of a motion?
I think we just need it.
Mr. Chairman, I'll for motion that we follow the guide of the CDC and the Governor.
I second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fleming. I have a second by Commissioner Richardson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, five oh.
So that will also carry to the airport, because I know we got a fly-in coming.
All of our facilities.
It was, it was re, uh.
Was it rescheduled?
I think I saw something.
October.
Well, I know yesterday, at, yesterday at the rec war meeting, um, Greg had said that they weren't wanting to postpone it. But if they've already did it, then that's good. Okay.
This, this would apply to all facilities that the county owns, because those are the things that we get the phone calls about. And I would submit to you that this isn't hype.
No.
You know, we're trying to make decisions based on the facts as we know them and what's been handed down to us. Hype is when all the toilet paper's gone. That isn't clinical, that's hype.
That's hype.
So, this isn't hype that we're talking about.
I've only got six rolls left, by the way, so if y'all got any off the spare.
At a hundred dollars a roll, right?
If we got any of that EOC.
I didn't rush out and buy any, now I'm wishing I might have.
I buy big packs anyway, so.
I, I'd say, I'd say, uh, with that, with that motion that we just had and, and we all supported that, if we need be, we address it again at the next board meeting, and at that time, we can, if we choose to discuss it and, and raise, you know, if we want to take it off, or if we want to extend it, we'll do it at that time. But for the next five weeks, that is where this Board stands.
That'll be our message.
At this point in time, I just need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
A motion by Commissioner Hale.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richardson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.